Okay, call me into order. We're going to start with the flag salute. Plaguing, dents.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with grace as we make decisions that might affect the students, staff, faculty, and friends of the district. Be with our poll workers tomorrow and each of the citizens who carefully consider tomorrow's proposition. Thank you for those who have gone before us to secure our freedom to vote and let our voices be heard. Remind us that we, that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
We'll have a roll call. Mr. Newsom?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. Rowland?
Present.
Mrs. Trub?
Present.
Mrs. Zermatt?
Present.
Okay. We're going to have presentation recognition. First is Certified Employee of the Month is Jamie Evans, counselor at the Pohai.
Okay, come forward. Looks like Mr. Dent's going to present.
I don't think we've done these in person in a while.
We have not done these in person in over a year. So, this is awesome.
This is great. This is fun. I'm going to read a little bit of, kind of a paraphrase of your nominations, if I may. Mrs. Evans communicates with students and parents by phone, email, in person, and in her off-hours. Working at the Dan Moran Baseball Field as a volunteer, she makes herself available to all students and staff for support 24/7. Her heart and actions align to genuine care and concern with each student and each staff member she works with. Students know they can email her for a question at 11:00, and she will get back to them with an answer or a call into the office to talk. She'll find additional resources such as college, tech school information, transcripts, caps, gowns, food, shoes, whatever's needed. Mrs. Evans has invested extra hours, although she has very few extra hours, to improve communication with Pohai head partners as well. She has built strong relationships with Wildcat Academy, Pioneer Tech, and MOC, just to name a few, all of which have improved student opportunities and outcomes. She is a model of professionalism, care, and relationships that support the overall well-being of students and the positive school culture. Thank you, Mrs. Evans.
Congratulations.
Oh, Adam, you don't know it, but it's your job to hand them the trophy.
(laughter) Okay, he's going to do the next one. And, and...
Next is Support Employee of the Month. It's Col Moberly, and he is a district mechanic.
Randy Empting, our Director of Transportation, is going to present, and...
I'm going to fold this right here.
Very good, Adam.
Words cannot express how much you are appreciated for everything you do for the staff here in transportation. Col is a hard worker, young man, puts much energy and knowledge. He doesn't care the buses for the schools. He seldom misses any work, helps create a good working environment with his witty sense of humor and bright and assertive. He has worked as a one-man show for the past year, and obviously loves his job. Col, you are a loyal employee, and we are very lucky to have you in transportation.
They take a group picture?
Yeah, okay. Y'all may step outside and take a...
We still have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Friend of education, I got ahead of myself, is Bowers Trucking.
We can skip them.
I was trying, apparently.
Oh, well, we're pretty loud.
All right, since I nominated them, I get to present.
Hand hand the trophy.
Hand hand the trophy.
I'm excited to hear this. This is good, all right. I'll pick up one I wrote, not the real one. Bowers Trucking Logistics, a local company with deep roots in Ponca City, is a business that demonstrates the importance of being community-minded. When Ponca City Public Schools had books and materials arrive in Oklahoma City with absolutely no way to be delivered, and this is in parentheses, without expending several thousands of dollars for changing not only our teachers but our students, Bowers Trucking was there to answer the call for Team PCPS. Early in the morning, I mean, like, 7:00 in the morning, Jay Barry Harrison and Garrett Bowers arranged for not one but two trucks to pick up our materials and get them back to Ponca City in record time. There were, how many materials? There were about 39 pallets of books, several thousand pounds of manipulatives, and tools for our teachers to get into the hands of our students. This was only made possible because of Bowers Trucking's commitment to our community and Team PCPS. Bowers has had a long history of community involvement in both Jay Barry and Garrett, although young, they demonstrated the core values of successfully engaged volunteers and business leaders. This successful private-public partnership with PCPS and Bowers Trucking Logistics is exactly what sets up our district for continued excellence in the future. It's our pleasure to recognize this outstanding company, and we look forward to fostering a deeper relationship with them and witnessing their organization's growth and positive impact in our community.
Woo-hoo, congratulations.
Okay, you guys may take pictures out in the hallway. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I like our youngest little guest over there.
Cute.
We need the family in the picture.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing your daughter. She's so cute.
Okay, public comments? Do we have any public comments?
No.
Okay. Number four is reports with potential board discussion. We have ACT testing of spring of 2022.
Yes, and we are going to have to push that to the next board meeting. The state did not release data in time for that to happen, so we will put that in the November. And we had already posted the agenda, so...
Okay. Now, two is an annual safety report by Mr. Adam.
Okay, so by laws, my understanding, we're obligated to report to the boards the district's safety plan annually. What I have here is taken from what Brett Smith has done in the past for the district. I've tried to make a few updates in the four months that I've been here of different things that we've, I've seen and added, as the way of training goes. The first thing, looking at security entrances, lobby guards, you know, we're really working hard to make sure that that's present in all of our locations. In fact, in tomorrow's bond proposal, you'll see security entrance enhancements at West and at Wildcat Academy moving forward. We are currently installing cameras across the district, additional cameras to our already robust camera network. You can never have too many cameras, but you know, what we try to do is leverage our funds accordingly to make sure that we're covering the sites most needed by our administrators moving forward. Also, I think we're very lucky to have two full-time school resource officers in this district. I tell the story during our bond presentations, we don't have to have our head football coach come and beg our school board to put school resource officers into our schools, and this board have done that several years prior to what has happened down south of here. In addition to SROs, we also have security guards at the high school at the front entrance, as well as the student parking lot. We participate in Alice instructor training, that is our active shooter, shooter on campus training, that's system-wide for support and full-time personnel. And security upgrades is what we consider with windows, doors, how we do our check-in process at the schools moving forward. But what we do pride ourselves in is having secure entrances at all sites. We, like I said, with the bond proposal, we'd like to add one at Wildcat Academy. Washington Pre-K was the last school that was to get a school a secure entrance, but with Wildcat Academy being relocated, it's time for them to get one. Hopefully, the voters agree with that tomorrow. Other ones that we are doing right now is an online threat assessment training. We did district-wide online threat assessment for a half-day, and then some select administrators, including myself, did a full two-day training with Pioneer Tech, local law enforcement agencies, some other support groups as far as community safety, where they had a national speaker in that really presented a lot of, I guess, relevant information, but also very forthright, and some of the things that you just don't want to imagine that some communities have had to deal with. I think it was very pertinent for us as school administrators to have that, that we can be as prepared as we can be if that was to ever, God forbid, happen in our own community. Continuing education in all areas of safety, this is just, it's one of those things with safety that we can never have too much training, that we have to have that balance between what we're presenting to our teachers and our students, but also making sure that we're revisiting that to make sure that in any moment like that, that the training kicks in and that we can help overcome that panic, that initial panic that happens. We are looking at adding additional cameras to our sites. I don't think we can have enough cameras in our common ways, common areas. I think it will help not only with safety, but with vandalism and other issues that kids seem to find themselves into. What else do we do? We do drills all the time. We have fire drills, tornado drills, weather drills, intruders on campus. We have building administrators that report that to my office, that we keep record of that here as well. Knox boxes, those are our secure little key entrances for our fire, emergency personnel at every one of our sites. Procedures flip charts, we go through those each year. We print those about every two or three years as updates happen. What are in those flip charts, about everything, what to do in a bomb threat, what to do if it's severe weather, what to do, you know, if you suspect someone is acting suspicious. I mean, there's pretty much every scenario that we can think of is detailed in there, and it breaks it down by roles, whether you're site secretary, or a teacher, or a student, a principal, assistant principal, who helps with communication. So I think it's just a good process, good practice for us to revisit those each year as we get back and throughout the year as we go. Communication, you know, I think that's a very big deal, and not only communicating between our stakeholders and the school, but also how we communicate between incidences that are happening at our sites with central office, and central office with the general public, or parents of the community. I think every time we have a situation, scenario like that, we do revisit how those communication protocols are happening, where we felt things were not as effective, and where we can embolster and improve that. I think we've already seen some instances this semester where we've had those meetings, whether formal or informal, where we're seeking that feedback to try to improve and make it better for the next time. Hazard mitigation, we are currently doing that right now. That is a process that is, happens with our city, Ponca City, the city and the school system are partners on this, where we do FEMA training, FEMA evaluation of our community, what would we do if the dam failed, for instance, or if we had an F-5 tornado that came through town? What would we do if we had a building that suddenly became inoperable or unusable? How would we handle coordination with parents and emergency personnel? So this has been very eye-opening for me as well, the city that takes care of all the costs on that. We are just about one player in the community that's at that table. You have Pioneer Tech, the Economic Development Authority.
P-66.
P-66, yes. So, Alliance Health, you've got a lot of key stakeholders that would be involved in different various hazards that could happen. You know, I mean, a train derailment with hazardous materials, you don't think about it, but you know, what would happen if the west side of the town was inoperable or inaccessible? And what we'd have to do. So, really strong partnerships that we have there, and we have some great FEMA instructors from DC that help us. At the end of this, we'll get a nice plan that you guys can look through as well, if you're interested on that. Timelines and challenges, obviously, money is always an issue. I don't think you can have enough money to address safety. You know, we can do as much as we can to make sure that we're trying to keep our teachers and staff and students safe each and every day, but at the end of the day, resources are limited, so we have to make decisions on what is the best way to allocate those funds. I think this district has always had and maintained the stance that students don't learn in an unsafe environment, so we're committed to the safety of our students and staff. So that's been really comforting and, I think, a good, good solid foundation for this district to operate from. Factors of completion and implementation, we work with making sure that our tasks get done in a timely manner and that they're implemented in an effective way that meets the standards that we set out for whatever safety initiatives out there. We also try to understand what issues that cause delays. Right now, we are dealing with supply chain issues, and I think you see that not only in what we're trying to do with camera installations, but even construction projects that we'll talk about that could have issues with impeding progress. And then why problems might not be anticipated, you know, there's, I think we take a lot of lessons from other schools where we see other things that happen and occur, and that causes us to step back and ask what would happen if that was in our district. You know, I think while they're unfortunate events, I think we, there's a lesson in all of them, and that we step back and evaluate that moving forward. So what's in our safety plan? So this is just a small overview of what you can find in that. Like I said, we try to think about different things. You know, being an oil town, you see pipeline safety in there as well. Earthquakes, we've had those as well. We just try to make sure that we brainstorm on all of these different things and how, as a district, we would respond to it. So timeline for this, this is not just, hey, we start on our safety plan in August and we end it in May. This is ongoing and constant. There is no beginning and end to it, it just, this is what we do, and this is how we will respond. I think what we have to be is intentional with reviewing this and being deliberate with communicating with our staff. I think sharing on a regular basis what we do to communicate with, in regards to our safety of our students and staff, with our community, with our teachers, with our students is very important. And like I said earlier, the first thing that when we have any issues, that it's usually a breakdown in communication, and whether that is someone miscommunicates, or someone speaks out that doesn't have the full facts. I think we see that sometimes in social media, where we can plant one maybe rumor that then takes seed and it kind of runs rampant. So what we have to do is try to, as a district, make sure that we're proactive in our communication and responding with a trusted voice, with the knowledge and information in a very plain way that leaves no room for interpretation, so. With the manuals and flip charts, these are printed, like I said, every two to three years. In there includes the different scenarios that we talked about. What we also do is we plan on our cost to increase at least 5% or more. This probably is a little different now in a COVID post-year. I wish it maybe was 5%. It's a little, it's a lot higher than 5% right now with supply chain issues. Other things we do is plan for training costs, whether we have staff development, professional development, and then any state and federal mandates that come down from either Oklahoma City or DC that may have an impact on how we operate as a district, whether that is we need to start social distancing because of a pandemic, or you know, whether we have to have secure entrances because of, you know, guns on campuses, those rules being loosened or tightened, just depending on what the political climate is at the time. So, resources, what is, do we help fight those costs, and how do we fund some of these issues? The first thing is, obviously, tomorrow we have a bond election that was, one of the components of our bond election is trying to increase the safety at our schools. But that also is increasing the ADA accessibility, whether, you know, falling is a safety issue and tripping hazards. We have paving for broken curbing or potholes that have developed over the years. So, the other funds we have are building fund. The state does provide some in training. There are grant opportunities. I think we have some great corporate sponsors locally that help us with different grant opportunities. Collaborative agreements, for instance, our hazard mitigation right now that we're doing with the city. The city has been a finance year of this project and has taken on all the costs on that, and we're going to benefit from all the experience with the FEMA individuals. So I think what we do is try to do a good job of leveraging those funds to make sure that we are maximizing the funds that we're getting into the classroom, but at the same time trying to create a safe school environment. So, goals for the next review, next year when I present to you, I'll have a good year underneath my belt, so we'll have a clear picture of what we're doing on an annual basis, on a monthly basis. But I would really appreciate, though, if you had any feedback for something you would like to see on the safety plan or safety report for the upcoming year, or if you feel like that met all the requirements.
There's a lot there.
That was a lot.
There's a lot there, because we do a lot.
Yeah, just a comment I'd like to make. As most of you all know, a couple weeks ago, we had kind of an incident here in Ponca City, and we owe a great big thank you to the local law enforcement, because even though it looks like this is just in paper, they really, they came through. I mean, the sheriff's office, the OSB, the local police department, the highway patrol. I drove by the high school shortly after the first call went through, and I'm telling you, those people were there. They were playing it, and they're doing it the right way, too. So it, it's more than just a paper exercise, because it, you know, luckily, nothing bad happened, but it was, you know, we owe them a big thank you, because they, they really responded well on that case.
Can I piggyback off that just a bit, Robin, too? Our staff did an amazing job, too, because we had participated in the Alice training, and it was not an intruder on campus, it was a lockdown, but many of our staff members treated it as an intruder on campus and barricaded the doors as they were trained to do, so our staff went above and beyond as well. So, that's why we do those drills, and that's why we have this huge safety plan to make sure our kids are safe.
You know, this book he's talking about, it is yay thick, because I've been through it and looked at it. It's got it all covered from A to Z. It really does.
I'd like to say, as a board member, I appreciated Shelley keeping us informed, because like, she, she told us the incident, and within minutes, she was telling us about the police are there, you know, I couldn't believe how fast we were notified.
Well, and we have a great relationship with the chief of police. He was communicating with me constantly, and I could communicate with you constantly, and Christie could get out information to the public constantly, so that good collaborative support and effort, I mean, that's, that's not just Ponca City Public Schools, it takes all of us to have a responsibility in keeping our kids safe, so.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Well, Adam's going to step up and do a bond presentation.
All right.
All right. This one's going to be more fun.
Yes.
Not that safety's not fun, but this is, this is going to be a fun one, and I'm going to be brief, because I think, I know time, we are crunched on time. This is what we took around to each of our school sites, community groups that invited us to speak or wanted to know more information. I actually pulled this out in my kitchen one day when I had a group of friends over, run them through it to just let them know this is what we're doing. And if you want to view this, this is online, this is on the school website. This is what we're proposing to do with our upcoming bond issue that is actually tomorrow, I haven't said that enough, and polls open at 7:00, and close at 7:00. But we have a real opportunity in this district, and I really want to give kudos to the foresight of this board and the administrators before me that thought about ways that we can maximize this opportunity. And my, my family always said, you know, making lemonade out of lemons. And right now, we have an opportunity in this district where we have an infusion of federal dollars unseen, unheard of since the Great Depression and during the WAPA projects. And what I tell the groups and clubs that I talk to is, back in that time, the schools received federal cash, and the community, the city received federal cash, and they did some big-time generational projects that we still utilize to this day. And do you know the WPA project the schools did?
The stadium.
Judy got it, yeah, the stadium, yeah.
She's seen the presentation.
She's seen, that's right, she has seen the presentation. That's our secret, though, Judy.
Bridges were also done to the parks and stuff?
The bridges at the parks, and Lake Ponca Park was at the city's.
It's in a beautiful stadium.
Pavilions, duck ponds, so, I mean, those, you know, we don't like the Great Depression, but we still use those projects that those elected officials sent to the communities to help spur the economy, help drive unemployment down. And so what we have is federal cares dollars right now that I think we can kind of take a page from history, learn a lesson from the past, on how can we leverage those dollars with this upcoming bond cycle to make sure that we do some big projects. And I know Shelley's talked to you about mill levies, our commitment to maintain our mill levies, that we are not increasing mill levies, that we are one of the lowest mill levies, not only in K County, but in the state of Oklahoma and among 6A schools, that this just seems like not a no-brainer, but slam dunk maybe, of how can we leverage these federal dollars with our local bond dollars to be able to do some one-time generational projects in our district? What I'm really excited about is how this project, bond proposition touches not only extracurriculars, but how heavy it is in academics. About 59% of the funds will, on these, when you combine cares with the bond, will go to enhancing elementary schools, middle schools, and our high school campus. That's not without touching a single extracurricular. That's bathrooms, flooring, HVAC, that are much needed in these buildings. So you can see here bathrooms, cares, those sites there will be receiving it. HVAC and flooring, we're going to be able to utilize our federal dollars to do that. Those are normal projects you would see happen in a bond cycle. And so what we can do is take those bond money and then be able to touch some much-needed extracurricular needs that we have. Again, 42% of our projects proposed will be touching extracurriculars, but these are some of the ones that are happening in elementary schools that a lot of people don't realize or recognize. Thirty-four projects combined with cares and bond money. You can see here the different things at each of the sites, and then on this next page here as well. The really cool thing that I think is really cool, and it's a future pre-care and another elementary school student for Ponca City Public Schools, is having a playground with a solid surface. Historically, this district's never purchased a playground for any of our neighborhood schools. Do you guys know who does purchase playgrounds for our schools? Our PTAs. And unfortunately, a lot of PTAs in this community may not have the opportunities other PTAs do as far as it comes to fundraising efforts, or, you know, even be able to do it. So, for this district to be able to do this, that will get kids outside and spread them out, and it will not only enhance our elementary schools, but each of the neighborhoods that surround them. So I just think it's going to be just an incredible enhancement to our community as well. Not to mention, security enhancements at West and Wildcat, safety enhancements for paving needs across the district. So, there's a number of boxes this bond issue will touch that I think moves the needle in the right way for not only the district, but the community. What we do have are also some athletic opportunities that we can do some enhancements with. The first one is baseball. This is an existing view of the baseball stadium from pitcher's mound to home plate. And what we'd like to see is, utilizing the same dugouts, is bringing in a wraparound stadium there with an awning, new concession stand, new ticket booth, bathrooms. What you'll also see is a new ADA accessible courtyard that will be accessible off Fifth Streets. This would be a view from Fifth Street to the baseball stadium, so you can see the ADA ramp there, so creating accessibility that is not there currently at the baseball stadium, allowing each of our guests the opportunity to be able to spectate a baseball game, or even just enter into the baseball stadium. A new covered awning for picnicking and grilling, I think just really adds a nice touch to the high school campus here. What I think is really important to point out is, the baseball stadium as in its current iteration really doesn't fit with the high school architecture at all. I mean, it's blue stadiums with red roofs. So you can see with this picture, it's kind of washed-out color, but you can see the blond brick wane coating with the red terracotta awning that matches not only what they've done at the Solon Stadium, but in the concert hall, as well as the Halle Building. So, really nice upgrades at the baseball stadium with some new additional signing, signage, so each of our visitors know exactly where they're at. So you can tell, big enhancements for the baseball stadium moving forward. The other thing I want to point out is our 6A softball stadium that is currently located behind Lincoln and West. A lot of presentations I do, the groups don't realize we even have a softball team. It's that far tucked away, and it really breaks my heart. So we need to make sure that we're doing something to make sure that our stadium is very visible. And what you can see here is some lovely transformers there off to the lower right of that press box, emit just a delightful hum. This is our home stadium, our home side bleacher system for our Wildcats, and this, bottom line, we can do better and need to do better for our softball girls. What we propose is stadium enhancements that you'll see that, similar to what you'd see at baseball, ADA accessible bleacher system, tying into the existing dugouts. Now, our softball stadium, our turf field at the softball stadium is phenomenal, and I was shown some pictures of what, can I name other schools?
Sure.
It's open meetings, so I guess I'll never get hired at Jinx. I was showing some pictures of the Jinx softball field, and Lord have mercy, I mean, our field is far, far ahead of where the Jinx one is, and I think we should be really proud of that. What's not there is our stadium and our locker room for our girls. What you don't see pictured in the softball will be locker room enhancements. I think we have 60 girls out, and it's, I think... I think we have 60 girls out and it's, I think it's either 50 or 60, I want to say 60 girls, 60. 60 girls out for softball and I've been learning this the last four months that, and they share a space that they have outgrown. And that's a good problem to have as a district that we have a number of girls out and going for it. I think it's our responsibility, especially as operations, how do we meet those students' needs moving forward? So I'm excited to be bringing this board a lot of different ideas in the future on how we can update and upgrade those facilities at the softball stadium as well. So you'll see the stadium, we had the renderings for that, but that's going to really be an enhancement, I think, make ours a kind of a top-notch 6A softball facility moving forward. What you don't see also pictured will be a new scoreboard as well. And you can see lots of grass, we'll have some paving there as well that's going to help make this a nice stadium for our girls moving forward. So real excited that this opportunity comes to fruition tomorrow. And we'll find out tomorrow at 7:00 PM. If you didn't know, there's a vote tomorrow at 7:00. There is also an opportunity tomorrow to look at what we can do with our tennis courts. And when I do this presentation, I ask people, how many tennis courts does the school system currently own? And everyone says, you know, all those ones on Fifth Street Park. And I'm like, no, those aren't ours. Those are the cities of Ponca City. So what we'd like to do, and kudos to Brett Smith and Shelley to work with the city on entering into, we haven't entered into agreement, we have a nice, that they were very open to the opportunity that this passes, that they want to let the schools take over ownership and maintenance of the tennis courts moving forward. With that comes the delightful Wally Smith Tennis Center as presented here that was erected back in the 60s. What we currently have are nine tennis courts on that complex and due to a number of different issues, we lose out on a number of hosting opportunities as well as practice opportunities for the 80, I said the 8-0 tennis athletes we currently have. Nine courts, 80 tennis athletes. And they are currently dressing in this facility right here. This was the men's side of the facility, two stalls and one urinal on the women's side. I just took their word for it, I didn't go in there and take pictures. Was three stalls. And we have 80 tennis athletes dressing in this facility to try to get out onto that court, which is taking about 20 to 30 minutes to get those athletes out onto the courts and just creating all kinds of issues. The one thing that I do want to point out is we're proposing the addition of five new courts on the very south location there. Does anyone know what was currently there? The splash pad. And when I do this presentation, I'm an Overbrook neighborhood guy. This is my toddler's favorite splash pad in the city of Ponca City because we can drive pools wagon down there to it. And I promised him that before there's any work done on those tennis courts, that splash pad is being relocated in that park. And so, and I think talking to our property committee members on this board, Dawn and Robin, I think they share that same sentiment and commitment to the public that before we do any work on this tennis complex, that that splash pad will be relocated in that current park. So not in a new park or a different park, but in the Overbrook.
Does that park also include the, I was thinking about that big circle area that's in that Fifth Street, or is it called Fifth Street Park?
That one's, was that War Memorial Park?
Yeah, it's War Memorial. War Memorial. I don't, I just, is that where they're thinking about it?
No, they're wanting to do it in the same Overbrook.
Same where the.
Yeah. They may just be doing it, the city's going to pick the best location that works for them, but our commitment is that we want to maintain it in that park, so. And my toddler is very important in that decision-making. Moving forward. So this, I know I'm pressed for time. What we do want to also point out is in this tennis facility and currently in that Wally Smith Center, we will be rebuilding a new Wally Smith Center befitting of the great tennis, great Wally Smith of Ponca City fame. And a commitment to ensure that there is a bathroom for public use as well because that is something the Wally Smith Center provides for individuals. And as a toddler parent that's had some unfortunate diaper issues at the splash pad, I was very thankful for that bathroom, so even in its current condition. So moving forward, we, like I said, have some opportunities to do some once-in-a-generational projects and I'm really excited to show you these three projects. The first one is proposed multipurpose indoor facility. This facility would be about a 44,000 square foot facility, so just a modest, small facility, I guess you would say, and heavy into sarcasm. This would be a wonderful tool in our tool belt for not only our athletic department, but our marching band, our high steppers, our cheer. What we currently run into is during any inclement weather that we face and it seems like with two weeks of polar vortex last spring, an ice storm in the week of February or October, that we just seem to run into more and more opportunities where our kids are getting short-changed because we just don't have a location to put them. Right now, all of our outdoor sports, marching band, flag step, or high steppers, flag, all that, we either try to shove them into an overcrowded gym where volleyball and wrestling and basketball are all occurring, or we have to cancel and send them home. And so our kids lose out on a number of opportunities to be able to perform and practice. So what we'd like to do is propose this facility, the additional front part of the facility would be about 8,500 square foot of locker rooms for men's and women's soccer, concession stands, and bathrooms, because we have, would like to propose a new athletic field in front of this facility. So if you're curious on where this facility would be located within the district footprint, in that upper right-hand corner of that facility, that red building, is where we used to get donuts at Turtles. And then, so Fifth Street would be here at your lower left of the screen, lower left corner, and Seventh Street would be back there where it looks like a beautiful field with evergreen trees. So just would make a dynamic impression to the high school campus as you entered off Fifth Street. The other thing I want to talk to you about is the concert hall. In 2015, in the last bond election, I get this wrong most of the times, but it passed in 2015, I think at 81%. It's either 81 or 83, I can't remember. And the reason why it passed at such an overwhelmingly approval rate was this concert hall. I mean, this was the flagship project of that bond issue. And this whole project, and what I tell people, was always designed to be a two-phase project. The reason why was they would cut no corners, they built it the right way, did the right things to make certain that all the needs of our students, of our faculty, and gave the concert viewer a penultimate experience. And by far, if you walk into that facility, you know that that is a special facility. So what we would like to do is the second phase of this project is be able to open it up for hosting opportunities and also for rehearsal space for our students. And that was with the proposed addition of our chorus, band, and orchestra rooms to the rear of the facility. This, like I said, this facility was always designed to be a two-phase project, so this would just be completing that vision for the 2015 bond issue. We have, the building's been laid out, the utilities have been laid out, and it's been designed and constructed in a way that this will be an easy addition for a contractor to get these facilities up and going if this passes tomorrow. So what's really unique about this is as a concert hall, we are the only district in Oklahoma that has a standalone concert hall, which will create a number of hosting opportunities to allow us to showcase not only our beautiful concert hall to other schools and communities, but to showcase our community off as a group of citizens that takes care of their arts and appreciates the arts in schools. The last thing that I'm really excited to talk to you about is our STEM project, and I know I'm going long, Shelley, I just get too fired up about this, is a multi-phase project that we want to get going in this bond issue. The first thing we want to do is, and I change this, is a complete teardown in the Anderson facility, so not tearing it down to the ground, but gutting it down to the shelf to where it is nothing but four walls and a roof on it. We'd like to relocate the counselors to the first floor. Why? Because we have our counselors located in the high school with the administrators and to get to the counselor's office, you have to get to it in a very public way. And so if you need to get any assistance with academic help, but then any assistance for a mental help or emotional help or physical help, you have to, one, be brave enough to admit you need help and then, two, to be brave enough to do it in a very public way. So moving, relocating our counselors to that first floor is going to create some new opportunities for our students to be able to seek that assistance in a more private way. It also gives our counselors a more, I don't know, nice facility to operate in and work in on a day-to-day basis. We can also add an elevator with a secure entry off that rear of the Anderson building. There's a parking lot right to the north of it that will allow outside guests that work with our Wildcats, whether that's counselors or social workers or psychologists or any external individual that comes in, which we have a number of that come in and work with our students to give them that entry there as well. What's really cool and what I'm most excited about are these new STEM classrooms on the top floor, a new makerspace fab lab space, and new innovative curriculum options for high school students. And what am I talking about here? I'm talking about the acronym STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Math. It's kind of a buzz term that gets thrown around a lot in educational entities, but this is more than a buzzword, this is an action plan for not only our facility, but in the way of curriculum design and development and implementation. So we are working actively right now, hand in hand, not only with the design aspect to working with our high school instructors, our secondary director of curriculum to identify what we need in this space, because you have to design the space that also is functional for the students and for the instructors. You're going to see lots of modular furniture, these are just renderings, ideas of what the space could look like, concepts, tables that can move, rooms that can be reconfigured on the fly. Why? Because some projects are going to take more table space, other projects are going to take floor space. We want a lot of, we want to create lots of visibility and sightlines to help inspire creativity and innovation. We want this facility to buzz when you walk into it. Like if I had hair on the back of my neck, I would want it to stand up when I walk into this space because I'm that inspired with creativity and with the robust collaboration that's not only occurring between teachers and students, but among students themselves as they are working to create and design and tackling problems to today's solution, or tackling solutions for today's problems. So you'll see floor-to-ceiling whiteboards, open ceiling concepts, you're going to see exposed mechanical systems as kids work on different challenging projects. I think this has the opportunity to be the, probably the biggest transformational piece in this bond issue. That not only changes the way we deliver instruction at the high school level, but has ripple effects throughout our middle schools and our elementary schools as we get kids fired up for academics in the STEM-related area. What I don't have shown here is the capability, and I believe we're moving down this road, is for our first esports team that will be housed in this facility as well, which would just touch a whole nother group of students in an extracurricular that's sponsored by the school district. So this is my bond presentation and I tried to do that in 15 minutes and I don't think I succeeded, so you guys can write me up on that one. But I do think there's just so much in this bond proposal that it would do a disservice to try to short-change any of the projects that we're doing. So 34 proposed projects tomorrow and 7:00 AM, like polls open and you don't have to be just a resident inside Ponca City. You can, Ponca City City Limits, you just have to reside in the Ponca City School District to vote. So I'd take any questions about the bond.
Thank you.
And if you want more information, just read about it on the Community Watch page.
Great job.
Since we have comments, for potential comments, there's two things that I want to point out. This district has been transparent since 1998 when we said we would keep our mill levies even at 22 mills. That means no tax decrease when the bonds fall off the tax roll and no tax increase and we would leverage our other funds. You all know that we get about 1.5 million per year for our building fund expenditures. We have over a million square feet of property and over 5,600 students and staff, so there's a lot of wear on a building and there is no way that 1.5 million can touch that. So we rely on these bond funds and leverage our building funds or other funds to do these projects for our students. And we've taken some criticism that this is focused on athletics. Adam gave you some data. It just so happens, and our property people know, that we've been working on this since 2019. And then when we got the influx of cares dollars, we had to rethink and push those needed repairs in to our cares money because they are allowable. It just so happens that the bond projects, that most of them are academic or extracurricular. And you guys will know that there is unrefuted evidence and research that extracurricular activities play an important role in a student's academics, their sense of belonging. And after, our kids this year are going through their third year of living in a pandemic and their mental health is waning. And if you have a sense of belonging, they need those extracurriculars more than ever. So it's not like that we're pushing them to the forefront. We have this unique opportunity, so.
We need to talk about, people don't realize what bond money can be spent on.
Right, that's right. Capital improvements. So we can acquire property, we can remodel our buildings, we can purchase new transportation, we can repair transportation, we can acquire furniture, technology, and actually, we were able to move our transportation into cares. That was an allowable cost and we usually have 1.5 in every bond election in our transportation, so that was moved to cares. So that freed up 1.5 million dollars. We were able to do a lot of our technology projects through cares as well. So we're in this unique position, a once-in-a-lifetime position, I hope, for our kids. And unfortunately, our kids are going to go down in history as the generation who had to be educated through a global pandemic and it hasn't been easy. And we've all suffered, but our kids have suffered the most.
Plus, the bond itself, no teachers, no personnel, nothing.
We cannot, we cannot.
You can't give me a raise, Dawn.
We cannot, we cannot, we can't hire staff. It's capital improvements, new transportation, technology.
Well, and I'd just like to go ahead and say in response to that, thank you, first of all, for being such amazing stewards and being able to have the foresight to take this opportunity and working together to do all of that and just, for, you know, those that do think that it's focused only in one area, just, I mean, you can literally read the presentation, it's not that hard, so let's go ahead and make some discerning, let's make some good decisions before we start typing. Yes, just, I think that goes for all of us.
I think one important comment, and I'm not sure what the number is now, but over 50% of our students, nine through 12, participate in some extracurricular activity, whether it be sports, whether it be band, orchestra, choir, some civic club type activity.
Tennis, soccer, those clubs.
Any athletics.
Theater.
There's a lot more kids, it's not just sports, there's just a lot of extracurricular activity.
And that's been our goal. When we all became Wildcats, in the first year, we had right at 50% of our students, six through 12, secondary participating in an extracurricular. And in one year, we jumped to 79%. And then we went into foreclosure. And it's time, it's.
Well, and I'm going to commend you, Shelley, and I'm just going to say this publicly, too, that I appreciate what you've done in making changes, necessary changes that have been needed in Ponca City to help it get more affordable for all students to be able to be in extracurricular, because I know that's been a barrier in the past, but it has changed in the last few years, I feel like, and I appreciate that.
We're leveraging those funds.
Well, it's not even, it's just even the cost of equipment and finding those community givers who are willing to share their money with someone who maybe has less than, that can, I mean, I'm telling you, I have six kids and their feet's never stopped growing. I feel like, I think I buy new cleats, you know what I'm talking about. I think I buy two new pairs of cleats a year.
Yes.
And a couple of different sports. So, you know, those just types of things where people are stepping up and I do, I just think it's important.
Yes, amazing opportunity that we have tomorrow, so.
Go vote.
Yeah.
Okay, next is our superintendent's report with potential board discussion. Mr. Adam, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Adam. And it's a COVID update, 19 update.
Okay, so it seems like you all have been inundated with board policies and you have. You heard the required board policies at OSSBA. I presented all of the options last month, then we discussed in our committee meetings in curriculum and both property. So tonight, there is a board agenda item to approve or make changes to the board policy. And some of these are required by law, but there are two board policies with options. And after our discussion in committee meetings, we want to talk a little bit about interference with peaceful conduct of activities. Basically, Senate Bill 403 prevents a person or a group of people from willfully disrupting, interfering any school business, including school meetings, including operations, including employees, including activities. And if a violation occurs, then proper notice to leave the school property or property used by the school with students present may be given. Now, in our current policy, if the offender returns within six months without written permission, they shall be guilty of a misdemeanor. Now, what I want to tell you is if we have to remove someone for interfering with the Now, what I want to tell you is if we have to remove someone for interfering with the peaceful conduct of any of our activities, they are provided a letter. And it is not automatically six months. So it could be for one event, it could be for two meetings, it could be whatever is decided by the athletic director or the superintendent or whomever. And the options are the appeal processes. So the first appeal would be a written letter to the superintendent within five days of notice if they don't agree with the suspension or whatever we assign in regard to the interference with the peaceful conduct. Then the superintendent can make a decision. Within five days, we are adding this, based on discussion from the board members, that the offender can write a letter to the board clerk, which is Betty, and the superintendent's decision may be appealed to the Board of Education, and the board's decision is final. Any questions about that policy? Okay. The second one is a required policy, and it's on suspension, dismissal, and non-reemployment of teachers. And Jennifer talked to you a little bit about this in last month, which would have been September. And this policy was revised as a result of Senate Bill 13. And it requires that a teacher whose certificate has been suspended by the Oklahoma State Board of Education be placed on suspension while these proceedings are pending. There is no choice for board members, that's per Senate Bill 13. However, there are two versions to choose from regarding career status of a teacher. And before the Teacher and Leader Effectiveness Act went into play, a teacher acquired career status once they've been hired for a fourth consecutive time. Now, there are two ways with TLE being implemented. So if a teacher has been employed from 2017 to 2018 or later, they can have career status once they complete three consecutive years and their rating is superior for at least two of those three years. That's, that's not one of the options. The other option to, to attaining career status with TLE is in four years, if a teacher has maintained an effective rating for at least two of the four years. Now, here are the options to consideration. There are two. We are recommending option one, because it's most similar to our current policy. Okay, so let's say a teacher has completed four consecutive complete years in the district and was granted career status by you, the board, after the applicable principal and superintendent petition to the board to grant the teacher career status. Now, that means that they may not have been at effective for the last two of the four years. And we would have to specify the facts supporting granting career status. The other option is, although the law permits an employee to establish career status after completing four complete years in the district with board approval from a recommendation from the principal or the certificate, the board can decide to not approve these recommendations. And that means if TLE criteria are not met. I don't believe we have anybody in our district who would even fit in this category. So if someone did not meet the qualifications, option two, if you chose to go with option two, it wouldn't matter what the reasons are. You all would not rehire that teacher. There could be multiple reasons why a teacher might not reach effective status. They could be out on long-term leave. And we would have to provide that information to you. But no one is meeting that criteria, and we monitor that closely. And as you know, teachers are on a temporary contract for the first two years, and we can non-renew for cause. So just because we decide to do that. And, and we work hard with our teachers. You know there's a huge career shortage in the state of Oklahoma, and it's our job to help them grow as teachers and help them improve. And it shouldn't be for cause, it should be for effectiveness. I mean, if we decide that they're not growing professionally, we can non-renew within two years. So we are recommending option one for the board to consider. Any questions there?
ACT's looked at it, or everything's okay, Zach, on ACT side? Yeah.
Pretty much follows the law, so.
Yeah.
Okay, then, no questions there. You'll have the opportunity to vote on those policies later on. I do want to give a COVID update. Here's the last month of Oklahoma COVID Alert Risk System levels. You can see the last time we were in red was just after this board meeting last month with a 75.5. And if you'll notice, in September and the first week in October, we have maintained pretty steadily in the 40s, which puts us in the orange-two category. Now, these are the State Department of Education color-coded risk levels. And you can see the levels at the bottom. This is average new cases per day, per, per 100,000 capita in the county. So currently, we're at orange-two, but I have some really good news. Our rates are decreasing in our school, and we've continued to see that, even though the risk levels have maintained. So I want to talk to you a little bit about that. I've got two sets of data here for you. At the end of the school day today, on 10/11, you can see what our percentages are. And if you'll go all the way over to the right, our total staff and student cases, we have 62 close contact quarantines in effect. That's 1.16% of our staff and our students, about 5,300. We only have six test isolations in effect, .11. So prior to today, we had less than 1% close contacts and positive cases. At the bottom, beginning tomorrow, I went ahead and closed out the isolations and quarantines that end, ended today. You can see, look all the way over to the right, we will have less than 1% of our staff and students affected by quarantine or isolation. So that's really, really good. One of our goals for attendance is to maintain 95% attendance. That would mean, we don't even have 5% of our students affected by COVID at this point. So, so that's a really, really good sign.
Is your close contact, because you've got a classroom down?
Could be, but I will tell you what we, I'll tell you what we were seeing. I would say of those 62, probably 40 of those are household close contacts. When someone goes to the doctor and they're diagnosed with a positive case, they will tell them that the household family members need to quarantine. More than 50%, probably 75% are family close contacts. So we're doing really well there. Here's where we are at the end of the school day today, as far as site percentages out. You can see, we don't have a lot of staff out. We have the highest staff out at Washington Pre-K, and let me talk to you about that. That's only two people. But at 6.90% of the staff, it was a self-contained classroom. Well, all the, all the classes are self-contained, but this was a self-contained resource classroom that had a morning and an afternoon. And sometimes there are some fragile students with health issues, and every one of those parents chose to quarantine. So that class was totally flipped to distance learning by choice of every single parent in there. And if you'll go right across to Washington Pre-K, we've got 17 kids out. 16, I believe, are from that specific class, so we only have one other close contact, and that was family. So there are more than 5% of our staff and students at Washington Pre-K out currently. Take a look at the other, I mean, look at the high school. 11 out of 1,400 staff and students. Okay, here's where we'll be tomorrow. One day can change things tremendously. So we have that class returning to Washington Pre-K tomorrow. And you can see that when we start in the morning, that Liberty Elementary School is going to have our highest percentage out. That's one staff member and six students. Our goal is 95% attendance, so we're not even close to having 5% out. Okay, here's what one month can do. The graph on the right is what I presented to you on 9:06 at the board meeting. We had 20 positive cases and 49 close contacts with 69 total. Look at the difference in positives, and that's the key. If there's a positive at school, that's when we run a contact tracing investigation. But of those five positives last week, only two were at school symptomatic. So we only ran two close contact tracing investigations, and one was the, the class at Washington. So huge difference. Now, I want to show you, these are new charts that we have, and Nurse Webb created these charts on our Google documents. And you can see, we had a really rough week, the week of 8/29/2021. And that's our, it shows our total cases, and those are indicated in red, and then our total contacts. And then the chart on the right is the combined cases and contacts. So we had 547 affected on 8/29. So you can see, when we started school, he's even started in, in July, we tracked cases in July, and I'll tell you why momentarily. But when we got into school, the week of 8/15, you can see, we did nothing but increase, and then we had a sharp decrease. So that's, that's some good data.
Wasn't that also when we changed the masking policy?
And I'm going to talk about that. That was at our September 9th board meeting. And that's a hypothesis as to why this could be going down. There are several hypotheses that we have. But I also wanted to show you this, this chart. This is total combined cases and contacts year-to-date per site. So the blue indicates close contact, the red indicates positive tests. Now, on the right, I have a chart of our largest to our smallest sites, and that includes both our staff and our students. And Pohai, obviously the largest with 1,400, they do have the most, 354 total combined cases or close contacts year-to-date. Wildcat Academy is our lowest with 103 students and staff member, and if you'll notice, they've only had 15. Now, what I want you to take a look at is Trout Elementary School. They are our eighth-largest school, and they are commensurate with Wildcat Academy. So we haven't had a lot of cases at Trout. If you'll take a look at Woodlands, they have more students than Trout, but they've had 147 cases, and they're probably closer to West Middle School, who has more than double the students. So we haven't had a lot of cases at Woodlands lately. We started out early with cases at Union, and there's not a lot of cases now. So there's where we are year-to-date, and we have come up with some hypotheses. I'm not a medical expert, but talking with our medical community and the support we get, and our, our daily meetings with our, or our weekly meetings with the Oklahoma State Department of Health. More kids are masking, and this fact has saved us more at the elementary level especially. Before we implemented the mask mandate, you have to think that elementary kids are in the classroom together all day long, which means the viral load, when there are positives, is higher when they're together. We did not see spread in our elementary schools last year, but we did this year. In fact, at one class at Union, we had five close contacts convert to a positive that weren't household close contacts, and we didn't even have one last year that I know of. So our masking has increased at the secondary levels by about 70%. Obviously, people can opt out. Here's what we do. We, we implement the mask requirement in the classroom. It's compulsory. If a student does not have on a mask, we assume that they've opted out. 70% is better than 5%. Now, I will tell you, at the elementary level, we've gone from about 10% to about 90% of our students wearing masks. They wear the mask in the elementary, and it's made a, a big difference. More and more of our secondary students are fully vaccinated now, and that number increases. We cannot ask that they can provide us that information. As of today, 222 of our students and staff have tested positive within the last 90 days. That's, that we know of, that have been reported to us, likely could be more. And those that have tested positive likely have antibodies that are protecting themselves and others. One key item, which I think is the most strategic, is key, is parents are not sending their kids to school if they're symptomatic or waiting test results. And I think, just getting back into the groove of school, that parents would send their kids to school, that they had a stuffy nose, they assumed it was something else, or if they were waiting, awaiting test results. We had some of that. And I will even say, we had some of our staff come to school symptomatic, and so we've gotten that word out, and once those close contact quarantines started. I do want to point out that OSDH guidelines say there is no recommendation for close contact quarantine if individuals are fully vaccinated or if they've been diagnosed positive within the previous 90 days. So there's just some hypotheses. Now, I used to think that maybe people weren't testing. That could be the reason it was dropping. But if people weren't testing, our county rates would fall, and they haven't. They've maintained. So those are just some hypotheses. We need to make some changes in our protocols. And per our Return to Learn Plan, depending on the risk level, there's different safety protocols that may be in place. So immediately, we are going to plug our water fountains back in and turn them on so that they're available for student use. And our custodians have been directed to clean those water fountains frequently. And you guys know that teachers are masters at protocols and procedures, so they'll work with kids. Do not put your mouth on the water fountain. They can bring bottles to fill if they so choose, or they can bring bottles of water from home. So that's going to occur immediately. Lockers may be utilized immediately, and I want to point out, this was not a district protocol, this was a site decision. So we've given this information to our principals. After fall break, we are going to start allowing visitors, such as guest speakers, consultants, tutors, assembly providers. They're all going to be allowed in our building. Mask and vaccination are preferred, but we cannot require that, and we won't require We are going to return to elementary morning assemblies Tuesday after fall break. Some of our smaller sites have already started doing that, and that's a good bonding time for our sites, so all sites will be resuming the morning assemblies. They've been doing them virtually. Capacity limits will be lifted in large venues, and right now, we have no capacity limits in our outside venues, but we do in our inside, so we are going to lift those capacity limits. And here's the thing about extracurricular, it's a choice to attend these, and there's plenty of room to distance, and that's up to the patrons. And, you know, we don't require masks. The only time there is a mask requirement is in the classroom where there's compulsory attendance, and then we assume if they don't have a mask, that they've opted out. So we're seeing some true benefits here, and it's time to make some changes.
That's just in time, Shelley, I think, for the October 25th orchestra concert.
We are having the October 25th orchestra concert, and I let Ms. Conkrin know that there will be no capacity limits, and it is going to be Pre-K Spirit Night. So we talk about promoting our Wildcats and getting our kids involved, that's a night where our Pre-Kers will come. It is the Halloween costume. Our Pre-Kers will get to dress in their costume, and we'll provide them a free Wildcat gear t-shirt, that mine t-shirt.
That's so fun.
We are going to resume singing at the elementary levels. It's been our recommendation not to sing because of the aerosol spray and the effect it has on people with COVID. Our secondary sites have been doing that, because they can spread out. Some of our elementary sites can. We're going to recommend that they move to the cafeteria or outside if possible. So that's going to start occurring after fall break. Now, if we see the need, based on our real-time data, we may enhance our protocols, but it's time to loosen up, because we know what we're doing is working. Any questions there? Questions, comments, or discussion? All right.
Okay, next, we have the consent agenda, and we have the agenda with commentary. Minutes from September 13, 2021 regular board meeting, contracts and agreements under $10,000 and surplus resolution.
Motion to approve item six.
I'll second that.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Troop?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye. Considering, take action on the following district financial descriptions, A through M. We have budget amendments, we have bond fund reports, we have sanctioning requests for 2021, 2022. We have booster club fundraisers and treasures reports and ratification and approval payroll.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Troop?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Considering, take action on resolution to K County Election Board calling for the annual election of Board of Education member in Ward Two and Ward Four. Shelley is going to be doing the explaining.
Okay, so we could have all kinds of scenarios based on recent changes with our board member election laws. We have two wards open. We have Nancy Seat, which is Ward Two. She's up for reelection, and the term expires. And then Ward Four is also up, which is currently held by Board Member Rowland, and she was appointed in February of 2021. And board election laws say that she will have to run in the next election for the remainder of the term of Ward Four, which ends in 2024. So we could, we have to file this election resolution with the K County Election Board by November 19, 2021. The filing date is sometime in December. I believe it's December 6 this year, and it's open from December 6 to December 8. Now, if there are three or more candidates for either position, we will have a primary election, all right? And if someone in that primary receives 50% or more of the votes, it's over. If not, we go to the general election, or if we only have two candidates per seat, then we go to a general election, which is sometime in April, April 5. So we could have a lot of scenarios. So we could have one seat that has more, three or more. We could have one seat that has two or less. So we could have a primary and a general, and we could have a primary where one person doesn't receive 50% of the votes, and then we have two seats voting in the general. Who knows what could happen? So we'll know more after December 8 of 2021, whether we're going to have primaries, generals, or both.
Thank you. Do we vote on this one?
Yes.
Is it take action, yeah?
Yes.
So, yeah, I move to approve that one.
Second. Okay. Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Troop?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Considering, take action on the following board policies. We discussed them earlier and back in September at a regular board meeting. And our superintendent recommends us approving the policies as presented.
Motion to approve, bottom three.
Second. Mrs. Troop?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Considering, to take action to accept quo and award contract for Sober Brothers for the Pohai North property. And the bids for the labor, material, and equipment to demolish and remove structures, trees, and sidewalks, drives, and foundation on the district commercial property located on Brookfield and 7th and Comanche. The cost would be $49,500. Do we have any questions for Adam?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Troop?
Aye.
Okay, considering, take action of the 2021, 2022 Ponca City Public School District Comprehensive District Academic Plan and Site Improvement Title I Plans. This is, we are required to update the components annually, and they're held here at the administration office. And it's basically for school improvements. Is that correct? Okay.
There's a lot of items in there.
Yes, and Mrs. Vogel sent those to you earlier.
Thank you for putting them all together, Terry.
I actually read it, so I move to approve them.
You actually read it? Like, we don't read ours, that's Robin.
Robin was one, and I'm sorry, who was second?
Dawn.
Dawn. Okay, consider, take, I'm sorry, I was going ahead.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Troop?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye. Okay, considering, take action on recognizing the following events. A is American Education Week. American Education Week observe, it's going to be observed November 15 through 19. Presents all Americans with the wonderful opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring our children receive quality education. We, as a public school, thank everyone, the volunteers and everybody that do this. And then on B, we have National Education Support Personnel, and it's in conjunction with the American Education Week, and that's on November 17. Once again, thank you all very much. There's 339 district support employees. C is National Native American Heritage Month, and we begin at the turn of the century as an effort to gain a day of recognition for the significant contribution of the first Americans made to establishment of the growth of the United States. So we will be honoring Native Hawaiians, Alaskan natives, and American Indians on this. And then we will have, this will be on November 15 through the 19, and there will be artwork, and we'll be educated more on this, on their heritage. So that's a good thing. Celebrating Freedom Week, and that is November 17 through 13. And Oklahoma Public School would like to go ahead and do celebration Freedom Week to observe this. And it was for our Veterans Day, and we'd like to educate our students about the sacrifice made for our freedom and values on which the United States was founded.
Does each individual site do their own things? Or is it?
For, for?
Any of them?
Mostly. Now, our Native American Heritage Week, we do have district powwows, and our Title VI group meets together, and they kind of plan activities together. I will tell you that we didn't have the powwows last year due to COVID, so those restrictions have been lifted, and we will be having those. And as far as celebrate Freedom Week, our band in our high steppers did not participate in the Veterans Day parade. They will be this year.
Great. I move to take action on all of those.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Dawn. Okay, now we have, considering, take action on the following, oh, sorry. I am ahead of myself today, and I apologize, everybody.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Troop?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Okay, here we go. Considering, take action on the following contracts and agreements. Agreement with American Roofing to re-roof the maintenance building freezer. Its American roofing will provide materials and labor to re-roof the maintenance building freezer. The cost is $14,400. And then, any questions? Continue. Agreement, B is agreement with Highland Dairy Foods to provide child nutrition with beverages for the year of 2021 and 22 school year, and it's going to be apple juice, orange juice, chocolate milk, and white milk, and red diamond tea for the amount of $200,000. C is agreement with Ward's Air Conditioning. They will have a service technician to help with the maintenance of our PCPS HVAC equipment, and the total cost of that is $95,040. And D is agreement with, oh, this is, okay, agreement with Explorica on the Peru trip. And they came and presented, Mrs. Molly Carter and Ms. Marsh, they came in and presented. It's a nine-day trip, and they'll be going to Peru on July 17, 2023, to July 26, 2023. It's a great experience for everybody to go, and it's, they'll be using the different language and with different culture. And this is no cost to the pub, to the school district, and they will be doing fundraisers, and that's why they're here today to ask us to.
And Molly's here, Mrs. Carter. Molly Carter is here, our Spanish teacher and our SUCO rep, who will be one of the co-sponsors on this trip. If board members have any questions, they did present at curriculum.
Okay, I do have a question on it. Is there a minimum number of students and a minimum date that they have to turn their money in by?
They can sign up, I believe, until like two months before, but there's no minimum amount that we need to go. But they, each, each student that signs up has their individual account. So somebody could sign up next week, and then someone could sign up last minute and pay all at once at the end.
But is there a cutoff date that you all will make a decision that it's on or it's not on, depending on the number of attendees?
Early bird, early bird, I think, is October 31.
Yeah, it will extend, so the, usually until about a year out, they give like a $200 discount. So it probably, within a year, if we don't have anyone sign up, as the price goes up, then you would probably call it. But from the trips that we've done before, her, by herself, and me by myself, we've never, besides with COVID, we've never had to do that with different persons.
And the company actually canceled that trip. And we do have some interest in it already, so.
The other question I would have for Gary, from a liability standpoint, does the school have any liability on this?
The primary liability lies with the organizers of the trip.
Just like field trips and such in state?
You know, there's always a chance of residual liability to the school district. And you can't really cover that liability. Our general liability policy doesn't cover stuff like that. But that goes with any number of things. But remember that there's the tort claims law that protects us from most liabilities. So the school district's about as safe as it can be.
I've been on two of these trips and was going to do the third one, but it was called off. And I think they're very well organized. Explorica's pretty good. And we've always had a guide that took, and the guides were all very good. And we didn't have any problems, so.
You want to be scared about some liability, put kids on a school bus and drive across state line into Ark City. That's the scariest potential liability you have, is when you cross state line.
Everything we do.
I have two questions, Ms. Carter. First of all, just curiosity, why Peru was chosen?
It's somewhere that neither Ms. Marsh nor I have been. And I've been to several Spanish-speaking countries, and that's one I have never been to myself. So it's kind of a bucket list item for both of us.
Great. And didn't she also say it's kind of a force? Your language is, you're going to test your Spanish skills here because there's not, it's not right there.
It's immersive.
Any Spanish-speaking country, but that was high on my list just because that's one that I haven't been to yet that I wanted to go.
And they've welcomed everybody, even the board to go with, Robin.
Any families. They don't even have to be high school students in foreign language.
See, I'm thinking about going on this one. And what I liked about this one is it's in the summer, so kids aren't going to have to make up homework. The other two I went on, it was during the, it was, yeah, the early part of the year each time. And, or March, I think, was the second one I went on, but anyway. And so now, you know, it's in the summer. We don't have to worry about kids.
Handouts also, it's a flat rate?
Yeah, they get three.
So it's not, it's not conditional on how many people sign up, or?
Right.
No.
They sign up, and they're, once they sign up and their price is locked in, so even if someone, another person signs up three months later, their price might be higher. But the, whenever you.
I see.
Yeah, the kid, three months.
So that's what you were saying, early bird get earlier, the earlier sign up, the more cost effective it is.
And what's nice, too, is they can start paying in payments. Because you have until July of, you have almost two years. And so you can just have them, you know, either write them a check, or I think, I think I did credit card, and they just did my credit card every month.
So this is for freshmen through high school? I mean, freshman through senior?
We're opening it to really anyone. We have some ties to East Middle School, so we're going to.
Because they're coming up.
Mention it there, but we would suggest that anyone that's middle school age or younger have an adult accompany them. Just, there are kids that we don't know when they're younger. High school kids are, for the most part, a little bit more mature.
And there's no cost savings for chaperone and student, or if a parent went with the charm?
For, for Ms. Marsh and I, yes, and then depending on how many people sign up. So every five people that sign up, we get a free spot.
I see.
One thing I didn't ask.
The more we have, the more we could pass out to other chaperones, but it just depends on the outcome.
Right.
What's happened fundraisers? I didn't ask that question. What do you guys usually do?
In the past, she's done a garage sale.
Okay.
We haven't looked into anything else really yet, besides the garage sale. In her, in the past trips that she's done, she kind of lets, when the kids start signing up, leaves it up to them and their parents. If they want to put in the effort to fundraise, if they need to, then we'll do what we need to set that up. But if they don't necessarily need to or don't want to mess with it, then we can do that.
Her first, her first one, I think she had like a chili, it seemed like it was a chili or some kind of dinner. But of course, you know, with dinners, you know, that's kind of.
Thank you, Ms. Carter, for coming tonight.
Thank you, thank you.
Nancy, I do have a question for Jeff on item B.
Okay, on the milks and?
Jeff, was that, did that go to bid, and is that a fairly representative price, or was it much of an increase?
If it did go to bid, we have to, there's only one supplier in state.
So?
That's the only company, and it's fairly regulated based on what they call milk standards of raw cost.
Can stuff not go through free?
Kind of answers it.
Not with the free lunches?
Yeah, it'll be reimbursed.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, guys. Any other questions on any of those?
Dawn, Judy?
No.
No?
No, I don't have any more.
Okay, so now we need a motion for number seven, A through, where am I?
I'll move to take action on A through D.
Second.
A through D, okay.
Robin and Anna.
Mrs. Troop?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Awesome. Okay. And now we need a motion to vote to convene an executive session for the following purpose. To discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel on the attached detailed personnel report. To discuss negotiations. To discuss a purchase or appraisal of real property. And to discuss confidential conversations with the board attorney considering pending claims and litigations. We need to go into executive session. Can I have a?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Dawn? Okay, let's go.
All in favor?
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Ready, recital by board president, that minutes of executive session were kept by the board minutes clerk and will remain confidential, confidential. Number 11, considering, take action on recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel.
Motion approved. Second.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Troop?
And we currently do not have any new business. Everybody ready to go?
Motion approved, adjourned.
Okay, Dawn? And just do. Okay.
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for.